I hereby call it a order of this meeting of the planning board on Tuesday, November 1st, 2016 at 6:00 o'clock. Any conference or may. Is there anyone here to speak to anything that's not on the agenda?
Yeah, I would like to say that my brother manages the LLC. The LLC, and I have nothing to say with that.
Okay.
Just so you know. So I'm talking, I'm talking for myself. Think about if I talk.
All right. So those newcomers, assignment here, please. The next, is there anything else that anyone wants to mention for the newcomers that is not on the agenda? Anything you want to talk about that's not on the agenda? No? Okay.
There's two seats here coming in, sir.
The next order of business is the planning board minutes from October 18th, 2016. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Are there any modifications or alterations?
There's a typo. Number six new business. Item working.
Okay.
You might want to reread the statement because it could be worded either two ways depending upon what you correct.
Okay.
We're talking about, she feels that the manholes have to be identified. Red Williams asked if the conservation as, not has.
So I don't know if it's that, if she needs to add conservation.
Could you repeat?
Circle on that issue and I'll fix the room.
Anything else?
That's the only one I can find.
Okay. And I think we'll modify that to H. If no one else has any modification requests, is there a motion to approve?
I made a motion when it through the committee.
Is there a second?
October 18th. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against or any abstentions?
I got abstained, I wasn't there.
Okay, one abstention. All right. The next order of business we have is the, is old business. We have a letter of credit from 311 East Street. We talked about this before and we continued the meeting to this point. Does the applicant have anything they want to add?
Yes, please. How about the answer from my brother Bob? There were, if I recall, three issues that we were dealing with. The first was the raising of the manholes. And we have talked to the association, the Montomb Estates Association, the condo association, about not cutting the road. The road is freshly paved. The preference is to not cut the road at this point. So we've come to an agreement where we're going to give them the money if it ever has to be done. There's, Jessica forwarded an email that Joe from DPW doesn't feel that it's ever going to be an issue as long as the storm drains are properly maintained.
Okay.
So the association is willing to accept that risk as long as we give them the money to do the work if they ever have to do it.
And how are you going to give them the money?
We're just going to come to an agreement that they're going to accept liability for opening those manholes if it ever has to be done. And we'll pay them the money for it. And we leave us a big liability to do it. They will accept the liability.
Would that, would it be easier to set aside?
It's an interesting thing. So I welcome comments from the board, but before I do, I just want to read, because you referenced Joe's letter. I assume everyone had a chance to see the note that Joe sent for the public. It's, I think this is from Jessica said it. She spoke with Joe Popinsky from the DPW regarding the buried manhole covers and Montomb Estates. Excuse me. He did not think it was problematic that the manhole covers were buried under the pavement and indicated that they could be found with a metal detector if needed. As long as the catch bases were maintained, a properly removed sediment, the storm systems should work properly. The issue I have with that, I think that's great and important, but we were talking about the possibility that at some point they might come forward and try to make it a public, a public way. And it may necessarily need to have the manholes revealed at that point?
I don't think it's ever going to become a public way.
Okay.
I don't believe there was ever an intention for it to become a public way.
So that's not an issue then, in your opinion? And you don't have any intention to make it a public way?
Again, if they needed to access it, a metal detector would be able to find the manhole covers and DPW staff would be able to find them if necessary.
Find them?
Yes.
And then who would be responsible for them? You're saying that you're going to be responsible for them if that were to happen? And this seems unlikely. I've been pushing. I'm just trying to prep to make sure the city's not liable.
There's a homeowners' association agreement that lines out what the maintenance responsibilities are for the association members. And this would be included in that document? Or it should be included in that document.
That would be part of the agreement.
What is that agreement again?
The homeowners' association agreement. Do you have a homeowners' association agreement about, that states your rules and responsibilities and how you maintain your association and the rules and regulations of your association?
It should have the rules and regulations.
Pertaining specifically to storm drains or manholes?
The whole development. It shouldn't be something specific to the storm drains, but it should be talking about all of the responsible, all the maintenance responsibilities that the association is responsible for moving forward. They are, they are walking away and that should have been part of your closing documents, I presume. That's typically what the condo associations, there's a homeowners' agreement that you understand, you know, what percentage of your condo fees are going to be used for all of that.
Yes, that document is there.
Okay. And so you may want to go back and review that to make sure that the homeowners' agreement includes all of the infrastructure. And it should be including the detention basins as well that need to be maintained. It's the whole system. It's not just one piece. It's like a human body. You can't just cut off one vein and, or take out the heart and expect everything else to work. It's all connected, so.
So the part about the manhole covers, if they ever have to get to them, that's be the homeowners' association responsibility.
And they have some sort of independent private agreement that you guys are going to uncover.
Correct.
But, just one second. Go ahead, Jim.
I was just going to ask, is anybody from the homeowners' association here? I assume you're close.
Yes, we are.
Go ahead, please.
Have you seen what these gentlemen are agreeing to in writing? And is it to your satisfaction?
Well, actually, we were here first to get recommendation from the planning board. We're waiting for your decision regarding this piece covered on the manhole covers.
No, we've been entering into an agreement until it was acceptable to the board. But that's the deal that we have on the table.
Okay, so you're willing to do that depending on what happens here?
Yes.
Is what you're saying.
And the money will be, will be coming forthwith, not if there is a problem.
Correct.
Maybe we'll set it aside and use it should there be a problem.
What I'm getting at is that whatever agreement you folks come to between yourselves, if it's mutually acceptable to everybody, then considering we have a recommendation that it shouldn't be a problem as long as routine maintenance is done, and as long as you folks are agreeable as to the conditions of that agreement, it seems like it's probably out of our hands, aside from that.
Can I make a recommendation? If you do decide to accept this, I, it's my preference that there's something in the file, that, a copy of this legal agreement. And I was anticipating that a draft was going to be presented tonight, and that's not necessarily the case. So, so I would recommend that, you know, as part of this, you need to, you need to, there'll be a letter that comes from the planning board saying, yes, we're releasing the letter of credit and that will go into the file. I recommend that there's a condition that's placed in there that a copy of the agreement will be submitted to the city for the file, so that 20 years from now, when we're all gone, and something happens, there's something, there's a record in the file that shows that this agreement is in place. And it should be, honestly, it should be recorded. It should be in the registry of deeds. It's something that should be recorded in the registry so that there's access to it.
So it'd be a condition of the release that there, that submitted?
A copy of the?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's either, it's, you could, you could do two things. It's my recommendation that it's, that it's recorded in the registry of deeds. That way, anybody can find it. Anybody from the general public. And in addition, a copy submitted, a recorded copy submitted to the city for our files. I mean, I can go on to the registry of deeds and get a copy. Anybody can.
Signed by the developer and the homeowner.
The agreement should be signed between, between the two parties that details all of this stuff out. I'm a little uncomfortable personally with it being a verbal agreement. This is the old.
Oh, no, no. Was that my attention?
I understand, but as of now, it's a verbal agreement. There's nothing on paper as of now. So the planning board is taking the confidence that the board and the homeowners will come to a mutual agreement that everybody's going to be satisfied with, and the city is now stepping away. This is the only teeth that the city has left on this development. So we're giving up the teeth that we have in hopes that this agreement is going to be put into place. And so I just want to make sure that the copy is submitted to the city so we have it for our files.
So we want a copy of the homeowners' agreement for the planning board and it to be registered with the register of deeds?
We need a copy of this agreement regarding infrastructure.
So can, my question, if your approval will be conditional on receiving that document?
Right.
So therefore, there will be no approval without that document, correct?
No. What I'm, this is, this is, we're under time constraint here, is the issue. The letter of credit expires on the 10th of November. The board can do a couple of things tonight. You can either decide that you want to re-up the letter of credit, which means that I called Chickapie Savings Bank and I asked them to put the letter of credit in place for another year until this agreement is in place and you have it in hand. Or you agree to release the letter of credit with the condition that a copy of this agreement will be submitted to the city for our, for our files, once it's signed by all parties.
Now, that's, that's interesting. That last point, I'd like to talk about the logistics of that really briefly. We've agreed to release it with this condition. Does that mean that they're free to go get the money only when that condition is met? Or does that mean they can get the money and it's assumed that they?
Which money?
Condition?
The, I'm sorry. The original money.
Yeah, forgive me, I misstated. But have the release.
And it's the letter of credit.
The letter of credit. So it's from the bank. So a letter of credit, basically, what it is, is if they default or if we don't, aren't satisfied by a certain date, which is, this expires on November 10th, so the board would need to take action before November 10th. If the board wasn't satisfied for whatever reason, you could pull on this letter of credit and the bank would pay the city $75,000 to do whatever needs to be done that hasn't been done. I don't think we're at that point yet. They, they have done everything that they said they were going to do, and they've met all of the, the standards that were set that were connected to the performance standards. There's only two issues remaining. One is in regards to the manhole covers, which we're discussing now, which there has been an agreement between the two parties, but we have no evidence of that. Secondly, has to do with the payment of the sewer and water fees. And I'm sure that the applicant will discuss that in a moment, once you, once we get to that point. So that's, that's where we're at right now.
There is one more thing.
Actually, I think I saw your hand for a second.
Wasn't there discussion of a fire hydrant at the last meeting about raising?
I was going to bring that up.
Okay. And was that what you were going to mention too?
Yes.
So we'll make sure that gets discussed tonight, absolutely. I want to try and just deal with these issues one at a time and then maybe we can pass them through. So I'm going to stay on the letter, on the issue of the manhole covers. Is there anyone else that has any feelings here? Harry, Libby?
In the event that we were to say, request the bank to extend the letter of credit for another year, could we then release it at any point prior to the end of that year if all of these conditions are met?
Sure.
Then why don't we do that?
Just extend it.
See if we can, yeah, try to extend it until we get it.
They need to come in for another meeting then to?
No, it's simply a phone call to the bank. My, my concern is that there isn't enough time. Typically, the bank needs 30 days.
Oh, alright.
We're past that 30-day mark. So that's, you know, I can certainly make a phone call, but I can't guarantee that the, that the letter would get to us before the 10th, because typically, they need 30 days to process everything.
So it seems the recommendation, based on everything else going well, to release with this condition is probably an optimal solution.
It could be a solution. I, I think there's multiple options here. The board needs to figure out what they're most comfortable with.
Anyone else?
So when, so when we met last time, we were also within the 30, that 30-day windows. So why didn't we have a meeting about this earlier with enough time?
Because they, they had filed saying that they were going to release it. And at that point, it didn't seem like there was any issues.
Okay. Sorry, I'm sorry.
I don't think I understand exactly what you mean when you say, usually, we need 30 days. In order to do what exactly?
We called the bank. We say we need another letter, the letter of credit is going to expire on this day.
And if they say, sorry, we can't do that, what happens?
I don't know. I haven't had that.
Can I just go back to my last question? Is it possible you withhold the approval until you receive that document? In order to?
It's up to the board.
So if, if, if you say, we're going to approve this contention on receiving that document, so your approval doesn't mean anything if you don't get that document by November 10th, let's say?
I think that's sort of what we're discussing right now.
Money in our hands before it's happened.
Right, right.
To the?
The document's been reviewed with the board.
No, we haven't done that, that document, yeah.
That document has to include the manhole and the raising of the?
I can't, it's not.
Fire hydrant.
Uh, no. The raising of a fire hydrant is a different issue.
Yeah, we'll discuss that in a moment.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I feel like in terms of the manhole covers, specifically, we've talked about, we, we understand what the situation is. The letter of credit logistics is a little bit different, so I wonder if we should move on to the other, up to your topic, so we can get a full sense of delay of the land.
I'm willing to do that. Does anyone else have anything on the manhole they want to hit on? Okay. Let's go to the next issue then, pick over the two, which you want to talk about.
We've contracted with a company to raise the manhole. It's just a question of getting there.
The fire hydrant.
I'm sorry, that, fire hydrant. Logistically, they're on a big job and they're trying to break away to get over and do it, but even though it's a two-hour job, it's hard to get a guy to just come over to do a two-hour job. But we are in the process of getting that done.
So it is getting what?
It is going to be done.
But it has not been.
Has not been done, that's okay, no. It would be if we could get a guy there to do it. And we've called numerous firms, but to get a firm to come over to just do that, it's not easy to do.
This is like, it's getting a little tougher and tougher. I mean, I think everyone would be satisfied with everything done to release, but we just, you know, these things are being done, but they haven't been done yet. And our criteria really is for them to be done.
Can I ask if that includes the shut-off valve?
Yes, we'll have a look at that at the same time.
Okay.
And there was one other, one other issue. Okay, so you paid. Twenty five hundred, twelve fifty, twice, is that what I'm seeing?
Yes.
Sword and water? Okay. Is this the first indication? Have you ever seen this paperwork before? Let's make sure that gets passed around to Jessica.
Can I make a photocopy of this?
You can have that one.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that one's out of the way. So we've got two issues. They're going to do the fire hydrant, they say. They're having trouble getting the contractor there to review. And the manhole covers, they're going to create a document with the homeowners' association. Any thoughts for the board?
It doesn't sound to me like we're ready to release the letter of credit with the two outstanding issues, unfortunately.
I'll make it work. If you want to extend it, I'll?
You'll find a way?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
You know, we have two weeks-ish.
You know, I wish it were different, but I, I agree with Libby. I think that it's just not, we're just, we need those things to be done in order to, in order to have them done. So my recommendation to the board is that we extend this to the next meeting. Will that be enough time for you to do what you need?
We'll make it happen.
Make it happen. That's amazing.
Would that be enough time for you to get yours done?
So, I mean, I think what we do is we vote to re-up it and then you come back to us as soon as you're, you've got those two things squared away and we'll take another route.
And you do need to vote for that, is correct?
From a cost standpoint, it's not that easy, but I understand your position.
Yeah, unfortunately, you know, I think we have these criteria we have to, we have to go by.
When is the next meeting?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Fifteenth.
Which is that day? Let's be on the 10th.
It's a Tuesday, the 15th. We have, we have a huge public hearing that night as well.
That's a lot to put on.
I'm just, well, I.
Well, it's only?
If everything's done, this should?
If it's everything's done, it's fine. It's a lot of administrative paperwork for five days after the fact, but it's, I mean, we'll do what we need to do.
Okay.
So we're going to?
We would need a motion to extend for one year. Is that correct? It's a one-year, the, the letter of credit.
Letter of credit for one year of total $75,000. I make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? Any abstentions? Okay. Our hope is that we're going to see you in two weeks, all the paperwork, and we'll just make it.
Thank you.
All right. Our next issue is the proposed zoning amendment with the definition of community facilities, section two.
Take care.
Okay. So, um, so I pulled this information today. So what, what I started to do in terms of research, well, first of all, let me just back up a little bit. So I talked to the city attorney, and his recommendations were to add commercial campgrounds to commercial uses in the table of uses. And his recommendation was to go look at what West Hampton had done, because he thought they had a pretty solid zoning in regards to commercial campgrounds. To add the solar to wholesale transportation and industrial in the table of uses, into that section of the table of uses, and to leave solar under community facilities. So it's not necessarily looking at redefining community facilities or changing that definition. It's a matter of adding commercial campgrounds to commercial uses in the table of uses. So, so where I kind of got a little thrown off, and this is where I think the board needs to figure out what they want to do, is we already have a definition of campground as defined in our zoning, as an area or tract of land on which accommodations for temporary occupancy are located or may be placed, including cabins, tents, and recreational vehicles, and in which is primarily, primarily used for recreational purposes and retains an open air or natural character. So that's, I think, a pretty good definition, all and all for campground. It's pretty, it's, you know, I'm not saying commercial versus nonprofit. It's covering sort of both, both of those two things. But when I started to do some research today on commercial campgrounds, I found actually a lot of communities have performance standards for commercial campgrounds. And I don't know if this is the direction we really want to go. It seems like more intense than, than maybe what our initial thought was. But at the same time, I'm kind of like, do we want to put at least some performance standards together so that there's something in place for the board to review or standards?
It's an example.
So here's some just general things. So minimum acres, which typically, mostly, and understand that the communities that have this are typically rural communities that don't have a lot of development. And so the standards are probably, and the permitting is probably way more than makes sense for us, for, as a community, in my opinion. But they're looking at a minimum acreage, and some of them are looking at 20 acres, 50 acres, which we don't have apartments that big in East Hampton. That doesn't exist. So looking at the property on West Street, it's, it's just over five acres. So maybe setting a five-acre minimum for a campground, maybe that might make sense.
Is there a realistic example of what we might be trying to stop here, what we're trying to prevent?
Well, I think what you need to be looking at, let me go through this, and sort of, so is it year-round campground? Is it a seasonal campground? There's some very specific language in some of these communities about the dates that they're set to be open. If they're seasonal, you know, they open April 15th and they close whatever, November 15th. The density of the sites, how closely packed are the sites allowed to be? You know, how much space? Think of it like a mini subdivision, except instead of houses, it's tents and platforms or cabins. So, you know, you got to think about it in that framework. The driveway and the access road standards, you know, you need to be able to make sure that emergency vehicle can get in there if need to. So you want to make sure, sure that the driveway at least can handle the weight of probably an emergency vehicle as it's going in. Frontage requirements, again, that driveway access, think of it like a subdivision road, and is there a certain amount of frontage that each site needs to have? Open space requirements, do you want to allow a site that has full cabins or full tents or full whatever across the entire site? Or should some of that area be retained for open space? Public health codes, again, most of these communities don't have sewer and water, so that's a big concern for them is in terms of potable, access to potable water, access to septic systems, and having the appropriate space that's required under the health codes for septic systems. And landscape buffers from neighbors. So those are provisions that are, that, as I, this packet that I put together for you, those are some of the reoccurring themes of standards that these communities are looking at. I'm not saying we need to do this, but I just wanted to present to you that, as I was doing some research, just simply looking for definitions of, of commercial campgrounds, I'm finding communities that have standards that are associated with them. Now, we want to make sure that whatever we do, we're not going to inhibit a business that wants to come into East Hampton and wants to put something together. The second question is, how often are we going to see this? Is it really worth going through all of the zoning work for a one-time thing? Or do we think that this is something that the community might see again somewhere else? And if so, then maybe it makes sense to have some limited standards in place.
Is it possible to meet somewhere in the middle and come up with something that might fit for East Hampton that's really slimmed down?
I don't know. So this is what I'm posing to you, sort of, this is the research that I'm finding. This is the situation. We have one person who wants to do this. We don't know if anybody else wants to do it. There are some things that we should be thinking about. I mean, I don't think Mindy is planning to go in there and build it all out and make it a huge noisy site with tons of people, but at the same time, are we not doing our due diligence by at least considering some of those things? Just because they have a good applicant in front of us or somebody who has a good idea doesn't mean that somebody else couldn't come along and?
I think the emergency vehicle access stuff sounds like an imperative. You talk to basic safety, that's.
I'm sorry. By you giving us the, this document, is this something for us to look over?
Yes.
And pick out? Because there are certain things in here that I wouldn't even think of putting on a campground. And if it's going to be a campground, it's specific, there's three specific areas, a campground, recreational, and then vehicle. Or you can use campers on wheels, or you can have a campground. Campground to me is probably a tent or maybe a recreational vehicle to up to a certain size, maybe. I don't know, is?
There's the 526 mobile home section?
No, no, that's, that's not yet. Don't get that part.
Go there.
Just only look at the campground.
Yeah, you're looking at.
All right, so I, I get the sense that we are looking at, you want us some guidance.
I am.
How deep down this rabbit hole should you go?
Right. Because it's going to, I mean, drafting zoning takes time, and so I want it, I want it to be time well spent. If it, you know, if it, if it makes sense to do something sort of, you know, some standards in place that is pretty limited, that seems to make sense to me, and putting it just in the table of uses, you know, then we're trusting that whoever comes forth is going to put a development proposal together and we are subject to whatever there. there. And the only thing that you have as a board is the special permit standards, or in this case, I think it's only site plan approval in this district.
In order to have any say.
In order to have any say. That's the permit that, you know, that we'd be looking at. So it's not even a special permit process. It's a site plan approval, so it's a by right use. Do you want to have some say on how that development is?
And this is our chances to modify it.
Well, I'm just, this is where we're at.
Well, my take on it is to do something, but to keep it narrow and really focused on the kinds of possibilities we might have here in East Hampton. Do we want to go around? Liv, you want to start?
Oh, I, well, you were throwing out potential for acreage requirements, and I would say if we're going to have an acreage minimum, I think it should, it would be fair to have it be no more restrictive than we have for large buildings in our highway business zone. So is that three acres?
You're talking about a planned unit development, where it makes use?
Yeah. So I, you know, I don't see any reason why a campground would need to have five acres when a 25,000 square foot store can have three acres or whatever.
So you're saying a three-acre minimum?
Yeah. I would say no more restrictive than that. And that, I'm not sure about the rest of it. I think I would need to spend some time with the packet.
That's fine.
I might have more opinions the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Harry, have any feelings?
Yeah, I'd like to see what just tents and maybe, you know, those camper, but not trailers.
No trailers?
This might be a campground, I mean, you know, it's not a trailer park.
What do you mean by trailer? You mean like...
It's a hookup, right?
Yeah, you know, it's electrical.
It's almost like a house.
What about tiny houses?
Yeah, like a big fifth wheel or something, something like that.
Well, I think Mindy's proposal was cabins.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing we want to have are like a dozen cabins. That's it. I mean, I live in the middle, I live in this awesome place. If you guys want to come see it, you're welcome to. But it's in the middle of development, basically, like all around us. Now, it's great because, well, now it doesn't look so great because it's winter and all the foliage is off. But for the most part, I can't even see any neighbor except for what's closer when you come right in the driveway. So I'm also getting older. I don't want to be noisy when I live, right? So we're just trying to keep, we want to make a living. We want to have, offer some lodging for East Hampton, which doesn't have any. And we want to keep it small, contained, and upscale.
How much acreage is there overall?
We have just over five acres.
That's right.
Even road access?
Yeah, it's, you have to drive in about a block to get back into where the house. And then just beyond that is most four acres. I want to say they're open, but there's trees and stuff.
So there would be road access?
Yeah, there already is, yeah.
So you already have a house there?
There is a house there. Right now, there's a multifamily house there, and there are a couple of barns on there as well.
Is that your house or...
I live there, yes. So I've been discussing with our attorney and with Jessica some that right now it's a multifamily house. If it becomes a campground, it'll need to go back to a single-family house, which we're actually in the pro, well, we're not going to do that until if we get approved, right? Because that's some of our income.
What kind of facilities do these cabins, as you would intend them?
I would like them to have heat, plumbing, I'd like them to be year-round if possible, for at least nine months, if possible. We're already, just because of the property, the house, the farm, it's touchstone farm, and it was used as a flower farm and kind of herb business for many years. And so they weren't very good about maintaining the physical structure. So right now, I'm actually in the process of just picking up trash and kind of trying to get everything buttoned up for winter. There's some electrical we need to do, so we already have that set for next week anyway. And so we'd kind of like to do some of that in mind that we might have a possibility to do more later because it's a little bit less expensive for us to plan it out ahead of time, so.
How many cottages are you thinking about?
We'd like to have a dozen, although I was, some of the research I've been doing, I spoke with, I've been talking to campground owners, and one particular person in, I want to say Southlick or somewhere like that, had thought that, which I haven't been able to find, and maybe you've come across it, because I wasn't quite prepared, that she thought we could maybe only have, she has cabins on her campground, that we could only have one per every half acre. But I can't find anything that says that.
That might be their zoning.
By the state. That's what she said. Yeah, I don't know.
Definitely looked that one up.
Sorry, I don't mean to, I shouldn't mind it in the foot, but I also...
Cabin per half acre? The state reg?
That's what she thought, but I can't find that.
Is that a health code?
I don't really know.
All right.
I went to campgrounds where they're closer, but you already have five...
Well, no, no, it's not, wait a minute, it's not how close they are to each other.
It's total acreage you have available.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But this person has like 500 acres or something, and I'm not good at it.
You have a little over five acres now.
A little bit, yep.
Including the house?
Yeah.
I would like it to stay under special permit.
Well, we haven't put it under the table of uses yet. Right now, campgrounds is a site plan approval in the zone for the nonprofit.
So that's where, so I...
For nonprofit.
So this is my whole, kind of where we are right now, is that I've spoken to Jessica a few times, spoken to our attorney a couple of times, and I don't want to be nonprofit, basically. I would like to be a for-profit. I think I can do more good, actually, in some ways, as a for-profit for the town. So, so right now, the way you're zoning is the community facilities head in, campgrounds fall under there, and that's kind of why this is coming up. And initially, Jessica and I talked about it with Joe, and he was like, it has to be this way, and I'm a little persistent, so I'm kind of still here.
I just want to make sure I understand clearly. We're saying the only way to do this is according to what we have currently, not changing this, is as a nonprofit.
Correct. Or government, a nonprofit, which goes back to that community facilities definition, which is what campground is, house under, under the table of uses.
I also want to mention, as we're talking about this, if I could, is that the property that I purchased was, for the most part, being used as a boarding house. So there were a lot more people there during its 30-year stint than I ever hoped on planning, really, on being there, because they were renting out rooms, and there were a lot of rooms on our property.
I heard from chat, I want to, I'm going to just shoot around here. I hope you don't mind, Harry, she had her hand up a moment ago.
No, it's fine. I just, I have a couple more things that occurred to me. I think the idea of being able to have year-round camping is appealing because we live in an area where, you know, people might want to go cross-country skiing or do other wintertime activities, so I think that makes sense, so, but we want to make sure it's camping and not living, so we would, we're going to need to look at length of stay.
Right, that's another thing in there.
Yeah.
And in the definition of campgrounds, it says it's temporary anyway, which is my intention. I don't want anybody living.
So anyway, that's just, yeah.
Okay.
But, yeah, temporary could take a lot of different definitions. It could be two weeks, it could be six months.
Mary, this isn't really just setting it for you two, it's for anything.
Of course, of course.
Let's go ahead.
You could probably, would you be a...
We can, Mary, go.
I'm sorry.
What separates a small house from a cabin? I mean, what, like a requirement of a cabin? Are there such a definition of a cabin? Running water and a bunk and a bed?
I can try to see if there's some zoning definition for cabin.
Compared to like small house, you know, like it could be small house.
Well, a small house is more to, oh, it's probably more of a permanent situation than it is, although the tiny house movement is a little bit, it's a little bit of a moving target by the planners in the world, and something that makes us quite uncomfortable, to be honest. So, because a lot of them are just built on, they're designed to be temporary, they're designed to be built on immovable wheels, and then you move them into somebody's backyard, and you say, in many years, you know, a lot of grad students, Conway School students have contacted me wanting to be in a tiny house so that they could be here for a year, and then they can, you know, go to wherever they want to go afterwards, and then they just take their house with them, they hook it to the back of their car, and they bring it with them, and then they park it in the next location. You know, it's an interesting, it's an interesting model because it addresses affordability issues and housing affordability. But our zoning and our health codes, we've tried to figure out how to make it work, and there's just too many, too many conflicting rights between zoning and health and building and square footages, and that it's really difficult to sort of make that work.
So what separates a cabin?
Well, I think it's probably seasonal, might have something to do with that, I don't know. I'll have to, I'll have to do some of the other.
I would try to find that out.
I believe you can limit, can you limit the amount of stay to two weeks? Most people, when they go, if they're going to use something like that, like she said, if they're either going skiing or something, and they're going to be there a week or two, and then they're gone. The same thing with this. It's probably on a weekly basis, and I don't think anybody's going to want to stay there You know, if you're charging so much, the price would be astronomical to pay a weekly amount.
I see people camped out, Eastern State, I hit golf out there all the time, and I see people camp there all the time. They're into these small campers and things, and they're there for the most of the whole summer. They hook up to a water, you know, water thing. And they're there, they're there for three or four months. They get here early in the spring, and they don't leave until the fall.
Well, it is true that the West Hampton campground, you know, people go and rent sites for six months at a time.
I would just like to say on the tiny house front, Greenfield just passed an ordinance, or an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow tiny houses. I think it would be really interesting to take a look at that and see what they did.
Someday, not now, but... I, it's an interesting model. It is something the planning community has been trying to figure out how to make work for years, that and Airbnb's. Those are the two things that are huge thorns in our sides right now, because we can't figure out how to keep the health codes and building codes and the zoning codes all jive. But I can, I can reach out to the Greenfield planner and I can...
I would, I would love to see that as somebody who has a tiny house that no one is living in, so it isn't a tiny house.
You do?
I do, yes. And that's, that's the other tricky thing about it, is like the, I mean, you can build, you can build anything on a, you can build anything you want to on a thing as long as, you know, but if nobody is living in it, then what's it separate it from a garden shed or a...
Right, so the, so the tiny house is sort of the challenge, is that because it's on wheels, it makes it a whole different thing. If it's, if it, you can make it an accessory apartment if it's permanent. If it's not permanent, then you can't, it can't be an accessory apartment, and it's considered to be a trailer. We don't allow trailers in East Hampton. It's because of the way that they're constructed that makes it hard to regulate. They don't fit into any, anywhere that we have. If you prohibit trailers, then something built on a trailer is prohibited. You can't have two primary buildings on one lot. So that's, there's a lot of challenges.
Well, cool and intriguing, and I admit to watching the show quite often. We need to go back to campgrounds. Do you want to throw in on this?
No, I really, you know, I need to do some more looking.
So I heard some interesting ideas. The big thing really is, as you suggested, keep it as a site plan, I think you said, or try to come up with some ordinance, it's sort of just a discussion, really. My, my inclination personally is where we have opportunities to, to create ordinance such that people don't have to come before us, to make things easier generally, better, not always. So, I mean, we have a little bit of disagreement there, which gives you not exactly a mandate coming out of this, and I'm not sure how you all feel. I mean, really, if you had to kind of throw in, would you say keep it site plan, case by case?
I think we were saying special permit.
Special permit. Special permit.
But just, so you understand, it's not consistent with how, so a nonprofit could come, and maybe this is how the board wants it. If you're a nonprofit, you get sort of the easy ride, and you can go through a site plan approval process. If you're commercial and you want to make a profit, you're going to make them go through a special permit process. So just think about that, because it is, it is inequitable, so...
This is why I think it should be, you know, we really should come up with some ordinance. I prefer that, that model. But I mean, I'm not necessarily saying I'm right.
And the site plan approval, it's still going before the board. You still have your comments. You're still looking at all of the things in regards to public health, safety, and welfare. It's just that it's a by right use. You still have that ability to change and modify that site plan. You're not just saying, go for it, we're not going to look at it at all. So it is kind of like a special permit light, you know? It's without having to require a public hearing, a butter notifications, additional costs to the applicant. I mean, it's above and beyond just the stricter review process, but it's also additional costs that the applicant would bear to have a special permit over a site plan approval.
Any further thoughts?
Can we just look at this and give thoughts to the next meeting?
Sure.
I mean, I know we have a stacked agenda, but, and then maybe we can draft some language after the next meeting?
Sure, that's fine. We have Cumberland Farms is the next.
Right, so you would probably have to do, we're having Cumberland Farms the next meeting, that might take up quite a bit of it. We may not be able to bring this up probably for the next meeting.
Well, you can. Well, we'll see, we'll see how things go, but I would like to keep it on the agenda.
We could put it on the agenda anyways, right?
Yeah, but I would hate for Mindy to come and sit through, you know, an hour and a half, Cumberland Farms, and then you guys decide not to do anything. So you either need to commit to doing something and, and just understand that the longer it takes here, the less decisions she can make about her business.
So that's, can I say something?
Absolutely.
I, that is awesome, because we're, we're in this like electric thing, because some of our wires don't have insulation anymore, and so we're, I mean, EverSource is coming out and replacing telephone poles for us, and they said that they would give us this transformer if we think we're maybe going to move in this direction, and it's a $32,000 thing they're going to give us. And so I would like to say yes to them, you know, and it's kind of on me whether then we continue to go forward, but we can't really make any plans until, and if you guys come up and say you have to be nonprofit, then I'll be nonprofit. I will, you know, I'll do what I need to do, but...
I think because we still need some discussion and some thought about it, if maybe you could just put some additional ideas together, if it were to go to, if you were to come up with some additional language and ordinance.
So this is what I'm thinking right now. I'm thinking that we add a line, line under commercial for commercial campground or per campground. We leave the definition as is for campground, because I think it covers both, and I don't want to confuse the things. And then I think it's maybe like a half-page or page at most of standards. And so those standards being, some of the concerns I heard was the acre minimum, not allowing trailers, we have to look into this cabin, the density aspect of it, and figure that out.
Yeah, I can...
Emergency vehicles.
Year-round versus seasonal, length of stay. I mean, I think we could, we could address that in like a half-page.
I agree.
And then that's just, it's the campground standards for commercial campgrounds, or you could even, and this is the other thing, you can decide that you would want to apply this to nonprofit campgrounds too. To me, it makes sense to do both. I'd like it to see as being equitable either way. And we just have like a half-page, we don't have to have four pages of lots of onerous permitting that needs to happen, but if we can do like a half-page of standards that you would look at in addition to whatever the site plan approval process is. So it's kind of like above and beyond what you're already going to be doing anyway under a site plan approval, and that they need to just hit these criteria. Does that make sense?
I think it's a great idea, and we can still have a discussion then if, you know, it's not something you want to hear before, or if anyone else has anything additional they want to talk about, please go ahead and do that.
Okay. And just to, but just to be clear, once we come up with this draft language, there's still, there's still a few steps before it actually gets approved. So just so you know, I just don't want you to have expectations about the timeline.
Um, no, Jessica's prepared, yeah. Every other week or the very end.
Very good.
No, 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 it's all good. We're just trying to make some plans that saves us some money, so. The one thing I guess that I have interest in, and I don't know if this is, or whatever, but when we're coming up with guidelines or whatever, so the only thing I have, a general question is about like lighting, because we've been talking to David Blumberg, you know, we already knew we are going to have to do, we already have a plan for like emergency vehicle, like, you know, we've already sketched this stuff out. But I guess I have some, I just am wondering about like lighting to, as opposed to like a commercial campground, like, because if we light the whole place up...
That's a nuisance to your neighbors.
Well, because is it camping? Like, right? So is it like the nice, quiet, peaceful thing we want it to be? Or now is it light all the time?
Thank you for reading that.
Well, we can, we can put something in there about dark sky standards, which I have in here, my, a reference document, a legal guide to deciding, nope, that's not it. I have something in here about dark sky. I have it, I know I do. It's in here. It wasn't here. But anyway, there's a reference document that I have for dark sky.
Is that in the, held at ordinance, that big packet?
Could it be sent to us?
I'd have to find it. I, I found standards, we, we had a condition regarding dark sky standards for, I don't know what it was, but it was something. And so I pulled the document, so that could actually reference. So, or just to see what the dark sky standards are.
I'll look it up to you just in a minute.
Yeah, they're, they're the standard language, dark sky standards, the standard language. They're basically to make sure that like, you know, moths or things that migrate at night aren't going to get thrown off because of the lighting. It's just, it's to prevent like pollution from happening.
And you'll add something to your half-pager, which will probably be more like a one-pager.
Yeah, so it's, you know, shielding things down and, you know, but we can just reference dark sky standards, and that's a pretty known thing.
Okay. All right, so I think we continue this to our next meeting. Do we need a motion for that, or is it already on the agenda? I think it's already on the agenda.
It's administrative, so you don't need to...
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else. Do you have any administrative items?
I think there's one ZVA thing in there. It's, it's a pre-existing non-conforming, extending a non-conforming use. So if you want to just take your standard, no comment kind of thing?
No comment at this time.
Well, it seems safe. I don't actually have, okay, here we go.
What, what is it?
I think, Landor, zoning board of appeals, please review the attached application